You cannot go.
Yeah, I can't go in.
All right, good evening, everybody. It is...
There's a lot going on. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock. If I could call the chairmen to order here. Welcome to our council meeting on 27 May. Six o'clock, and we will go ahead and begin. Call to order, and our first item is invocation by Pastor John Britt of Courageous Church.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening. We thank you for our city and the officials and leaders, as well as all the citizens who gather here. And we just pray that you would be over this meeting tonight, that you would guard and protect. And God, bring us all in unity as we work together to, God, hopefully honor you in all the things that we say and do. I pray that you would, as well, God, bless our community as we seek to fulfill the mission that you have for us. Lord, I pray that, just as we are reminded of yesterday, all those who gave their lives for us to have the freedom to be able to meet, to have discourse, to have even debate over different things and the way we lead, I pray that more than anything, though, we would all, God, find unity in the purpose that we have together, to make this community greater, and that you would do a great work that could only be attributed to you. Thank you for every person here. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. If I can, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice as well.
All right. Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
I am here. All right, are there any amendments this evening?
No amendments.
Okay, awesome. On that, we're going to move into approval of the minutes. And first up, we have the minutes from the 12 May meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
All right, that motion passes. And now we'll move into presentation and awards. And we have one for tonight with Ms. Debbie Overcash and the Rotary Club presenting Employee of the Year, Police Officer of the Year, and Firefighter of the Year awards. No?
Thank you, Council President Seifert. Hi, I'm Debbie Overcash, a member of the Rotary Club of Madison and Chair of the Madison Employee of the Year recognition. This is the 24th year that the Rotary Club of Madison, in cooperation with the City of Madison, has had the privilege of recognizing outstanding Madison public servants. These fine employees have been selected by their supervisors for this very well-deserved recognition. Our appreciation includes a plaque for each individual, inclusion on the perpetual plaque here at City Hall, a monetary gift from the Rotary Club of Madison, along with our entire city's gratitude for a job very well done. We are happy tonight to recognize outstanding employees who represent law enforcement, fire protection, and community services. So I've got Mayor Finley, Council President Seifert. Will you come right over here? We've got our Rotary Club President, Bill Hulsclo, and Al Sullivan with us. So first up, Chief Brandy Williams, will you join us, please? And congratulations to you, Chief Williams. Our 2025 Madison Fire and Rescue Firefighter of the Year is Captain and Paramedic Ryan Ledford. Ryan, will you please join us? Congratulations, Captain Ledford. Ryan has been with Madison Fire since 2015. He was promoted to Driver in 2022 and promoted to Captain earlier this month. Ryan has a daughter, Marla Lee, who is nine years old. We received several nominations from Ryan's peers and supervisors. Ryan graduated earlier this month from the Alabama Public Safety Leadership Academy through the Alabama Fire College. This is a nine-month program that teaches public safety leaders about the many disciplines in the fire service management and leadership. Ryan has participated in or headed several projects and committees, one leading the research on the proposed 48/96 shift set schedule that Madison Fire would like to implement. Ryan is also part of the training team in the Training Division that assists with preparing our new hires to attend recruit school, and then again, when they return from recruit school, to prepare them for shift. Ryan is a member of the Alabama TF3 and is on the water team. Ryan recently deployed to Hurricane Sandy in Baldwin County. Ryan has had a busy and successful month, graduating from the Alabama Public Safety Leadership Academy, being promoted to Captain, and now being recognized by the Rotary Club of Madison as the 2025 Madison Firefighter of the Year. Chief Williams says, "Ryan always has a calm demeanor, a positive attitude, and is always working with other members to ensure they are well-trained. I expect big things from Ryan and look forward to him playing an important part moving forward in our department." Congratulations, Captain Ledford. Thank you. Congratulations. Chief Jernigan, will you join us, please?
No.
Chief Gandy, I'm sorry. Andy, I was, sorry. And I'm sorry to say, well, I'm sure he's having a good time, but our Officer of the Year, Joshua Collins, is on vacation. So he's having a really good time on vacation, but we're going to tell you why he was selected of Police Officer of the Year. Officer Collins is currently assigned to MPD Special Operations as part of the Training Division. Since his appointment, Josh has made numerous contributions that have dramatically propelled the division to the next level. He has attended numerous training events to improve his skill sets, such as instructor development and pepperball instructor. He is currently set to attend additional instructor courses as well. Josh has taken the initiative in creating Top Cop Challenge, a fun competition involving physical fitness and job skills. His biggest achievement for the Training Division by far involves changes he has made to the hiring process, which has served to maximize the number of our hired officers. This involved changes to the testing process for police officer candidates to include times more convenient for prospective candidates, that includes appointments on weekends and evening hours to maximize the number of participants. He also made efficient changes to the process so that candidates could take part in multiple areas of the hiring process all in one day. That included physical training tests and executive interview phases. Josh has sped up the hiring process as well by ensuring that applicants forwarded by Human Resources would be called immediately to schedule their testing days within the following week. By doing so, the Madison Police Department was able to hire 15 people within one calendar year. Josh has been proactive throughout the entire hiring process, keeping a check on the progress of candidates' background checks in order to project a hiring date before the candidate could be hired by another police agency, as many candidates place applications with multiple police organizations. Josh's efforts in improving and streamlining the police officer hiring process has resulted in our agency goal of 90 sworn police officers within our department. Without his effort and dedication, the Madison Police Department would be operating with a serious staffing deficit, forcing the Training Division to place all of its attention on hiring new employees rather than their core function of providing important and mandated training for our current officers. Our ability to efficiently staff our department with sworn officers will allow other, more experienced officers to potentially transfer to other divisions within the department for their growth and development when the new employees hired complete their mandated police recruit training. Josh has also made needed repairs to our virtual firearms automated training system so that it is more widely available for officer survival and shoot-don't-shoot training. And he is currently exploring numerous different scenarios to cover emerging issues or training deficits in our officers that we have identified through internal analysis. Josh is currently preparing to certify all patrol officers in a new less lethal force option known as pepperball launcher during which our next continuing education in-service training cycle. Josh also helped develop and review policy for utilization that removed inconsistencies and contradictions when first introduced. Chief Gandy says, "Officer Josh Collins has been an invaluable member of the Training Division, whose efforts have greatly enhanced the size of our staffing levels and skills and abilities of our officers. He is an invaluable asset to this agency." Congratulations, Officer Collins. And just to let y'all know, Josh Berry is here with the Madison Living, and he is going to get a picture of all three together next week, and they will be on the cover of Madison Living magazine. And now our final. Our 2025 Employee of the Year is Director of Finance, Roger Bellamy. Roger, will you join us, please? We are excited to announce that Roger Bellamy is the City of Madison's 2025 Employee of the Year. Roger started with the City of Madison in August of 1995 as our Assistant Director of Finance after a successful six-year tenure with White Fleming and Associates. At White Fleming, Roger was one of the primary auditors for the City of Madison. In November of 2012, the City of Madison was rocked when then Director of Finance Lily Causey suffered a traumatic brain aneurysm and passed away. Roger was named interim director, and three months later was made permanent Director of Finance. Anyone who knew Lily, and as importantly, knew Lily's role in shaping Madison, worried that her shoes could not be filled. While Lily and her love of Madison will never be forgotten, there is no question that Roger has filled those shoes and helped take Madison to the next level of success. The incoming 2020-12 council and mayor leaned heavily on Roger's input as they looked to improve the city's financial position. In 2013, council added a half-cent sales tax, generating much-needed revenue. Rather than simply go into the general fund, Roger guided council to set up three separate funds: capital purchases, neighborhood paving, and debt service, with the new revenues used specifically for those purposes. This purposeful act focus now allows our city to schedule resurfacing of neighborhood streets, pay cash for critical capital requirements, and bond larger projects. In 2014, Roger supported the Town-Madison Cooperative District Development, arming council and mayor with data that helped create the funding matrix, and then again in 2018 when we built Toyota Field and landed the Rocket City Pandas... Trash Pandas. Roger's positive impact has also been felt supporting our Madison City Schools. As the data he and his team provided helped city and school leadership develop our 2019 property tax plan, which was then supported with a 73% positive vote. Lastly, Roger was the engineer of setting up Fund 38, segmenting larger projects approved by city council into a separate fund, allowing all stakeholders a clear picture of project cost, percentage complete, and dollars remaining. Currently, the city has 24 separate projects totaling over $38 million in Fund 38, ranging from $150,000 to $11,200,000. Throughout Roger's tenure, our city has continued to obtain clean audits, keep a strong bond rating, verify and validate all transactions, and we continue to have a solid fund balance just in case. Roger and his wife Beth have two adult children and one grandchild who just graduated from UNA. Away from work, Roger enjoys photography, all facets of music, attending Rocket City Trash Panda Games, and watching the Chicago Cubs and other sporting events on TV. Roger will retire in October as a trusted advisor to elected officials who oversee making decisions to move our city forward, spending more time with his family and his best furry friend Cece. Mayor Finley says, "Roger was a major contributor when our management team defined the mission statement that we still have today. Under his leadership, we maximized value with our community's money. On a personal note, I love Roger's heart, his passion for our community's success, and his willingness to speak his mind. Good things happened for Madison when Roger was involved. Congratulations, Roger. You will be greatly missed." The residents of Madison, along with the mayor, city council, and the Rotary Club of Madison, thank these fine individuals for their service to our community and congratulate you all on a job very well done. Please, let's give them another hand. I believe that council will take a brief recess to further acknowledge our honorees at a reception. Everyone is invited. And again, please join me in again congratulating and thanking our 2025 honorees.
If we can, we'll take about a...I'll just round it to 14 minutes, and we'll be back in here at the 6:30. and we'll be back in here at 6:30.
Your own line and whatever.
And I think we can speak our own line professionally.
Oh, no, there's no question you can.
Yeah.
But again, be engaged too.
Okay, yes, we're ready.
We're ready. All right. Thanks, everybody, for tolerating that small break there. Hope everybody was able to get some cake and refreshments. If you didn't, well, that's your fault. Sorry about that. So we closed out presentation and awards, and now we're going to go back into public comments. And so I got one. No, I had an email. Ah, got it. Thank you. So we have one person that signed up first tonight, but what I'll just remind everyone is limited to three minutes per speaker. And just ask when you approach the podium here, give us your name and address and/or district that you're comfortable with for the record. So with that, first up, we have Mr. Michael McKay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see you guys. Tonight on the agenda is the acceptance of a $10,000 donation from County Commissioner Haraway for Miracle League of Madison. This is a project I've been very passionate about for a little while, and I wanted to come give it a plug and also publicly say thank you to Commissioner Haraway for his very generous donation. The Miracle League project is a Madison visionary partner fiscally-sponsored project with the goal of putting an all-inclusive baseball field complex at Palmer Park for children with disabilities. And it's an all-turf surface. It's got wide openings, so it's all ADA compliant. And it's a need that Madison needs, very much so, in my opinion. I think the desire to have this project there is very big here in the city, and this is just getting us one step closer to making that a reality. So just wanted to publicly say thank you to Commissioner Haraway for his donation. And if anybody ever has any questions, they can contact me at this email address. It's miracleleagueofmadison@gmail.com, and I'd be happy to answer questions and give any kind of literature on it. So.
I just wanted to thank you personally, Mr. McKay, for being instrumental in helping this come to our city. You've been the worker behind the scenes. We're grateful to Commissioner Haraway, but we also owe a debt of thanks to you for bringing this to our attention and are very grateful for it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else wanting to address Council this evening?
I just wanted to make sure this gets on the record.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Margie Daly, 21-year resident, Karen's district. I have some objections that are on tonight's agenda. I'm going to object to Resolution 2025-172. And the reason I'm going to object to it is because on October 30th, 2024, I filed a complaint with the city clerk's office that these here resolutions, it starts with 2023-311, 2024-100, 2024-307, 2024-366, 2024-355, and 2025-60. Okay, so I appealed it on the fact that the Open Meetings Act was violated back when I filed this, and nothing was done. So therefore, I have compiled a complaint to the bar, an ethics complaint, on the attorney for not passing this legally. I don't think this should be on the agenda tonight. I think that there was never a public hearing. Park private VIP ticket holder parking lots are not economic development. There is case law on this from New Jersey, where I lived before this, and I helped make the case law. Parking lots are not economic development. Therefore, the city tax dollars should not be spent for it. I have three objections. The other objection is 2025-177R. This is Main Street. This is a DEI program. Both nationally and statewide, we no longer do DEI. We're going to spend $40,000 for three years in a row on a DEI program. Illegal. Shouldn't be done. Then I have one more, 2025-173R, which is Mr. Swatek. Now, Mr. Swatek made a very generous donation to Mayor Finley's campaign of around $10,000, and we've been paying $60,000 annually towards this lobbyist. I don't think it's right. I think it's considered legally a play to pay when you get a donation and then you hire him onto the city payroll. I don't think we should have to do that. My fourth thing is the grass on Brown's Ferry, where the new bridge was put, is about three feet. three feet high, and I was hoping we could get somebody to cut that grass because it really looks terrible, and that's the way onto the new community center, and it really looks awful. I'd appreciate if we could get the mowers out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Janessa Crossway. I am in District 7, and wanted to also say thank you to, oh, I should introduce who I am. I am also the chairperson of the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board. I've been the chairperson for
Ever.
A long time. I don't remember exactly how many years, for quite some time. And Michael McKay has been phenomenal in heading up this project. I also want to say a huge thank you to Commissioner Steve Haraway for that generous donation. I want to thank Corey Alfred, Parks and Rec, the City Council, the Mayor, and Madison Visionary Partners. The amount of resources, time, energy, and money that this community has been pouring into meeting the needs of all people, of all abilities, has been I don't even, inspiring. It's been wonderful. And the attention, the facilities that we are devoting so that all of our citizens can enjoy them is commendable, and I appreciate that. So thank you again to Commissioner Haraway and Michael McKay, and we look forward to Miracle League coming here.
Thank you, Janessa, and I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. You have been our chair for nine years, and you've done a fabulous job, and it's been a wonderful partnership with the city. So thank you for all the work that you've done as well.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to address council this evening? Saying no, we'll close public comments and move into consent agenda and Finance Committee report.
Okay, this evening at 5:00, we had a Finance Committee meeting and went over the budget, which we'll talk about later on this evening. But on the consent agenda, we've got an acceptance of a settlement from AMIC, the Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation, for Police Unit 362. It is $47,062 less the $1,000 deductible to be deposited in General Operations Account. We've got the acceptance of a $10,000 donation from Madison County Commissioner Steve Haraway to support the Miracle League field at Palmer Park. We've got the acceptance of $330.85 donation from propertyroom.com to be deposited in the Madison Police Department donation account. Acceptance of a donation from Walmart of one LG UQ7 43-inch television valued at $200.56 to the Madison Police Department to be installed in a department vehicle for operational use with the department's drone program. The acceptance of a $50 donation from VA HARP, from the Madison Senior Center, for Moms and Muffins event. And with that, I will move to accept the, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
All right, that motion passes. And next, we'll move into presentation reports, and Mayor Finley.
All right, and before I get to my resolution, I'm going to follow back up with something else that was said. Megan, City Attorney, you had a complaint filed. Have you heard anything back on that?
Complaint dismissed.
Complaint dismissed. Okay, thank you. And that came from who? Not just me, but who else? I didn't ask you.
Yes, and this was with respect to a public records request. A complaint was filed, and I answered it, and the bar notified me that it was closed.
Perfect. Thank you. Just wanted to get that on the record. Secondly, or I guess in this case, first, let me ask, I'd like to ask for council approval on Resolution Number 2025-177-R, approving participation in the Main Street Alabama program, and this is a resolution for support.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
I'd like to give a little bit more information if I could, just to make sure. First and foremost, I've been a part of this program, listening to this program for three years now, attentively. I've never heard D, E, and I together in the same sentence once, ever. Just because it's said doesn't mean it's true. All right. Secondly, I love the program, and I love how our downtown, which a lot of our downtown folks are here tonight. A couple of different things. One, you have to apply for this for their Main Street Alabama designation, and we went down as a group, together with our folks from downtown last Thursday, to make our presentation to the city for this. A couple of different things. One, when you look at the $40,000, $30,000 of that is for half of a person. The other half will be raised by the downtown crew, and already, I think they're at 25 right now, if I'm not mistaken, so we've got about $55,000 to put somebody full-time to support nothing but making sure that the historic downtown area grows in the way that we want to. And I know we'll get into more of this, you know, budget-wise if we need to, but I thought I'd go ahead and give council the information now. As we look at this, one of the things we've done over the last couple of years from a mayor/council standpoint is invest in our historic downtown, making it better, and I applaud you guys for a lot of the stuff that you've done. The avenues project, you know, that happened. We had to move a substation to be able to do that, to be able to put that down there for the livability that's there in the shops. The connectivity that's happened with Short Street, Shorter Street, Garner Street for our new middle school, Home Place Park, all has been already done. In this case, we're waiting now on the Kaiser Greenway, which will come from the avenues all the way to Kaiser and the development down there, connecting all of those folks back into the historic area. The wayfinding signage that council's invested in has been put in place to support this. And then the last piece has come down to the if-thens, and Brenda Matthews, one of the folks there, we know that Bradley Street has so much potential, and one of the last streets that we, as a mayor/council, would need to work on is supporting the infrastructure support. And when we see the next phase of connecting the avenues to downtown happen, that's going to be really exciting, and we're working on that. So all of that to say, the four main points that they focus on is first and foremost, organization. More good things happen when they have, this is handed back to the downtown committee, and they in turn manage the promotion, the design, and the events, and then the economic vitality that goes with that. The last two things that come with it is murals. You know, we already have got some livability down there, and if you want to see successes, Athens, Fort Payne are two of the best ones that we've seen lately. So this simply gives you guys, asks the resolution, shows support. We're still waiting to hear from them, and we'd hear from that in the next couple of weeks. I'll be quiet and answer any questions you guys have.
Now, I did talk with the merchants, and they've agreed to come and do a presentation for us. If we have any specific questions, if we could get them to them beforehand, that would probably be helpful. So if you want to get those to me, I'll get them to them. And so when we schedule our next work session, then we need to get with Paul because our tentative date is not going to work with his schedule. Sorry, Mayor Finley. And we'll get with the mayor and get that straight down, and when we get some dates, then we'll get with the downtown merchants, and we'll figure out, I'm assuming they're probably going to do something similar to what they did in Birmingham, maybe massage it a little bit, condense it some or something. But if you'll just let me know if you have any questions, and I'll get them to Shannon in the group.
And I just wanted to add thank you to all the downtown merchants that are here. So many friendly faces. We so appreciate your investment in downtown Madison, and we want to be good partners. So thank you so much for the wonderful relationship that you all have with us.
I just want to also thank you for doing the heavy lifting. I know a lot of the work on the application was on your end, and so we really appreciate all the effort, Shannon, and everyone downtown. Thank you so much.
I'm really glad you said that because, to me, that's, you know, one of the people asked is, is this the right time? And there's no question it's the right time. They have the momentum. They have the 501(c)(3) that, again, can help them continue to generate their side. And then when we put one person in charge of something, and you can see the focus that happens, whether it was economic development, communications, external affairs, you know, now this is probably the last piece of an individual person helping to make a big difference down there.
I'll add thank you as well. I want to do, do want to ask, and I should probably know this, the individual that we're talking about putting there, is that going to be a city employee? Is that, how is that, like, who does that person work for? And my mind is going to, okay, there's a salary, but then, like, benefits, those kind of things.
The downtown merchants. It would be the, basically, employers through the MVP when they put that under the umbrella. It'll be, it'll be done that way.
All right.
So it would not be our employee.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Good? Can I get the vote, please? I get one every once in a while.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
All right, that motion passes.
All right, thank you, guys, and just two more things. One, in addition to that, in talking with Councilwoman Spears, when it comes to the Swatek and the consulting piece that we'll talk about in the budget, we also welcome them at that same work session to come and talk to you guys about the value that they bring. And then in turn, what we've asked and will be able to do with them until we get to that point is simply keep it on a monthly basis until you guys would be able to have the work session. And then, once we agree, and again, if the budget is passed, then we get the nod from you guys to go forward with that, but just to let you know that. Lastly, obviously, the biggest thing that happened to us last week was the storms. And Tuesday, I don't know about you guys, but I have been told it's the first time I've ever looked really, really nervous in the 13 years that I've done this, and I can assure you that I was of what could have happened. I will say that anybody who has been through our Civic Awareness Academy or is sitting up here knows that we've got a great team in place that constantly communicated and were ready, were something to happen. The good and bad news is it happened. The good news is not at the level that it could have, but for anybody who was impacted, it was major. Within 45 minutes, we were on Michael Avenue starting to cut down trees. And as we continued to get communication between Public Works, police, fire, but probably the biggest thing to me is our community. It was amazing to see, just like what happened in the tornadoes of 2011, that night and the next day, not only the folks that were impacted there, but people came from everywhere to support and help with that. So just on behalf of our city, I want to thank our Public Works team. They are incredible. They're supported by police and fire. You know, Corey and Recreation and those guys were ready. The next couple of days, our chamber lost pizza coming to take care of them. I don't think we've stopped. Commissioner Haraway, Commissioner Vanderweer sent their knucklebooms immediately over. And lastly, as a community, it's going to take a little bit of time to pick everything up, so please have patience with us. And I say that as we watched a rainstorm monsoon happen. Thursday is supposed to be the possibility of more weather. Next week, I know there's a hurricane out in the Gulf from what I've heard, and who knows what rain's coming there. Our guys do an incredible job, but we're only as good as being able to get to it on the pace that we can, and it makes sense. So we're going to stick with it until we get it done, but I can't be any more proud of the team that helped us through that. And then I'm done with rain. I don't know about you guys, but, you know, no more dances anybody out there, all right? With that said, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we'll go into Council District 1.
Yes, sir. Well, with the rain comes tall grass, and so I'll ask everyone to also be patient when it comes to that. It takes our team a little bit of time to get to right-of-way. It's pouring here now. The grass is growing. It will be mowed eventually, but as Mayor said, everyone just have a measure of patience and grace with us. Since we last met, several of us went to the Bob Jones and James Clemmons graduation. It's a very long day when you're at both graduations, but it's just great to see those kids graduate and the celebration, so I know that everyone enjoyed that, and we wish them all well in their next steps, whether it's college, the workforce, the military. Just amazing to see the number of graduates get so much in scholarships. We are blessed with our school system. I had the privilege of going to the recent Tourism Summit. It was a great way to get to know different opportunities that are coming on with Greenway space and how we can market that to our citizens and our visitors. So my thanks to the Convention Bureau for inviting me, and look forward to working on a future Greenway, the Mill Creek Greenway. And lastly, several of us went yesterday to honor those that gave their everything to our country, to our nation, so that we can meet here without threat of violence or prison or harm. My many thanks to the Gold Star families that made the ultimate sacrifice with their son, their daughter, their husband, their wife. The American Legion 229 puts on, I've been in office nine years. I think I've been to everyone. I may have missed one, but I'm fairly sure I've been to all of them, and you just leave there with a huge sense of pride. So if you've never had a chance, please go downtown, shop at Main Street Cafe. Great time to go to lunch or visit down there, Lanier House, any of the businesses, but take a moment and go to that Veterans Memorial that our American Legion constructed. It will really take your breath away. And I'm just glad that we live in a city that we're able to go and do that. We had the band there, JROTC. Many thanks to the American Legion and for everyone who attended. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. District 2.
As Mara said, the American Legion did a phenomenal job yesterday on the Memorial Day celebration, and just the music, there was the choir, there was the band, but everybody there, you got chill bumps from just knowing what it stood for. We had so many people who gave their all for our country and how blessed we are to live in it and to be free. Being an Army veteran, I know most of us here are military-connected in some way, but knowing that the price that our heroes paid and their families paid, it just always brings tears to my eyes. So I'm going to stop about that, but I really appreciate the opportunity to be there to remember all of our servicemen and women. So now we're going to talk about the budget. So what council has in front of them is the one-page summary that y'all got several weeks ago, and then you have a printout of spreadsheet that y'all received on the first of the month. And as we go through it, you will, I got a few questions. One of them is on the amount of the fund balance. If you see on, I think it's the third page of the spreadsheet, it shows that the fund balance is about 21%. Every year, when we get to the end of the year, the fund balance goes up because we don't get to all the projects that we schedule. You know, you schedule your projects optimistically, and then it rains, and so not everything happens as fast as you want it to happen. We actually expect that fund balance to be closer to about 25%. The ideal fund balance is somewhere between 20 and 35%. So if we go to the bond market, that's what they're looking for. If it's over about 35%, then they think you're hoarding the money and not using it to the best advantage of your community. And so, and one reason that we have pulled the fund balance down from what it previously has been, besides that fact, is we decided as a council and mayor, as a team, that we wanted to take that money and use it for our communities. We have increased our neighborhood paving. We have increased our sidewalk projects, and we have completed our neighborhood parks. And so that is one reason why that is on the lower side now. I expect that probably by the end of the, as I said, it'll be up by the end of this fiscal year. And then I'm going to very quickly look at, if you see the one-page summary, our revenues, we have adjusted down for sales tax of $1 million decrease. We have adjusted up our property taxes for both Madison and Limestone County. We have also increased our ABC taxes and our table wine taxes. So I don't know if everybody's stressed, and that's what's happening there or what, but those are the adjustments to our revenues. And then in our departments, you can see listed, we've got the Toyota Field Parking Lot, we've got the police over we've got the police overtime because of the construction on the flyovers, we've got public works for the cemetery mowers. The clerk's office has gone up because of advertising and publishing for bid postings and job postings. We've got quite a bit of park and recs increases because of the new community center and the opportunities we have there. Fire has gone up because of the new annex and the salaries. We've gotten a health insurance increase of $115,000 is projected. And as everybody else's health insurance is going up, so is ours. You saw the increase in the mayor's office for the Main Street project. And engineering has got several collector roads projects and like the Gardner Street Extension and Millwalk Court Repair and the ADA sidewalks that we are continuing to work on across the, the city, that increased there. Facilities and grounds is increased because they want to add a plumber. IT has increased because of our new facilities and our maintenance contracts. Legal, we've had some work, extra work there for Toyota Field completion, for the MLB compliance, and the possible revisions on the ball core contract. And that pretty much sums it up. The net change is $2,110,353. And like I said, we don't expect that we, that all of the departments will spend their entire budgets, and we expect that fund balance to go up. But with that explanation, I will make a motion to approve the budget.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll give two real quickly. Thank you for all of your hard work to continue to be the liaison from us to the, to the council. I think you've done a great job with that. Two things to follow up on, on what you said as far as fund balance. We kind of planned for both of this same type of thing to happen in '03 and '04. Fund balances came in at 42% and 47%. Just so you know, our initial 2025 budget was somewhere in the 26% range. Currently, we're at 57%. So even if it looks like it's gone down a little bit, I agree that the number, and, and Roger agrees, that this while spending a little bit, we will be higher than that and in the range that we are, we're hoping to be at. And then the other part that, I, I, it's not even correcting you, it's an excitement piece. Part of why insurance is up for HR is because, for the first time, I think, in a long, long time, we're fully staffed in fire. And we're, and one of the things, there's more people that are coming on our plan, and so there's gonna be more, whether, we're budgeting just in case they take the family insurance instead of individual insurance. But that's a great thing for the city. Overtime, hopefully, will come down some, while you'll see some go up in, in, in that.
Does this include moving forward on the 2448? We can go ahead and move forward on that with fire?
No, it is not in this budget. It will be something that we, you know, and again, part of what we all talked about, and, and I can tell you, they're already working with Chief to continue to be really happy with what, not happy, but moving forward with the game plan she has and they have. And what we will most likely bring to whichever the new mayor council is, is that plan in next year's budget. So we have to budget for it. So it'll most likely be, you know, we, we, we start in October, and we would look to implement it sometime then.
I was thinking, because there's no real change in salaries, that, I, I was thinking the plan all along was to go ahead and move to the 2448, or I mean, to the 4896.
With the timeframe in between from here till the end of, till the end of the fiscal year, of making sure that we're all on the same page. I mean, I think that, you know, and we've talked a lot about it. You guys have absolutely funded them in so many different ways. You know, from more money to additional facility to equipment, we could go on. I think part of it is now, okay, we have what we need, we're fully staffed. Let's, let's turn this into something where we, we work hard to retain, that's probably why we gave the money. And we, you know, we've already recruited. So I think there's a timeframe where I want to make sure that everything's moving towards that. And if that's the case, it sounds like we're, they're happy to go, and the trend is, and we move towards that.
Okay, very good, because I was thinking as part of the compensation package, that was one of the things we got feedback on, was moving to the 4896. So I, I guess I misunderstood, I was thinking we were already gonna be implementing that sooner.
Not, not that quickly. Because, and again, it's gonna take, you know, make sure you say, make any changes. There's a lot of math that goes into how you're doing on specific periods, how they would work their shift. There's, you know, more than just that, and it'll give us some time to work into that.
And don't forget, the new fiscal year is only four months away.
Right, right, I know, I know, I know. Y'all know how impatient I am.
We're about to turn around and start the next budget.
Okay.
Well, and we just installed the new chief. I'm gonna let her get her, get her fire legs under before she throws that out, so.
Yeah, Connie, I want to thank you for all of the detail that you've provided and keeping the council informed. And I sent our finance chair the video from Huntsville's budget, mid-year budget meeting, so that she could see that, you know, it's not just us that is seeing reduced revenue, but also having expenses that need to be made. And Huntsville also dipped into their fund balance in order to meet the needs of citizens while being cautious in terms of what you're having to cut, what you're having to spend. So thank you for all of your efforts in keeping us informed and getting us through at this point.
You're welcome. It was really a team effort. I mean, Paul and Roger and I worked hand in glove to get it to this point, and I know they got tired of me asking questions.
You can't, you can't prove that.
No, I can't prove that, I don't have a video. But, but I'm sure they were going, why is she calling me again? But I tried to think of all of the questions that y'all would have, and then, then we, you know, we've got some more from y'all too, and they were very prompt in getting their responses back to me. And if I didn't understand something, I went back and, and asked again, and they would, they were very patient, and I appreciate them.
You were making our employee of the year really earn it this time.
I guess.
Congrats again, Roger, thank you.
I think he's got more gray hair since I got to be finance chair.
Oh, my. No, same thing, Connie, thank you so much. You've, you've helped make this very complicated process, along with everyone else. I would say simple, but it's just not simple.
Easier.
Easier, yeah, certainly easier to understand. The only question, and I think I asked you this earlier today, and it's not something necessarily we need to address here, but just kind of going forward, you made the comment, I think, we budgeted initially 26%. We're tracking right now, I think, actuals through end of month, February, about 57. Is there something in there, in those, in those actuals or lags that maybe we need to look at going forward for the rest of the year? Are we gonna see a significant lag or anything like that, that, that we project at all? Or is it just normal?
Yeah, Roger and I have already talked about, we're gonna get together after, after we get through this meeting tonight.
Sure, okay.
And get this passed, and then we're gonna sit down and see what we can do in order so that we can brief the council a little bit more frequently, so we'll be more on track with where we actually are. And so what we're gonna do is we're, we're gonna get together and kind of come up with a plan. We're gonna get with the mayor and get his input, and we'll get with y'all, all who, anybody who wants to give input to that and make suggestions. And so hopefully, in the future, we'll have, when we do these budgets every six months, it feels like every other week, but every six months when we do these budgets, everybody should hopefully be a little bit more up to date on where we are, and we won't have quite as much confusion for some people, I don't, I'm hoping.
And, and I think one of the things we're also working on, and we'll have it at the budget, the, the work session you guys have, is Fund 38 solves, and I won't say solves, but helps with that lag you were talking about. When you guys as council fund a project, we just take it and put it in a separate account. And that way, you know, it's paid for in that account, and you're not, and then what we do with our department heads for those last two months, it's not, it's in your budget, spend it. It's, if you need it, please get it, and if not, that money can be used next year. And a lot of times, helping fund salaries or those kind of things. So we do work with them to do what you said you do in the budget, but it's also, but you don't have to spend it all, so.
Okay.
So for that work session, I have the Highway 72 Fund, the Main Street Program, SWAT Tech, and Fund 38. So far, on my list.
Good list.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
When it comes my time, I'm gonna ask what you said again. I wrote down two out of the four.
I'll send you an email.
I'll send you an email.
Thanks. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, I think we got a motion and a second. Can I get the vote?
Connie and then me.
Yeah, I was Connie, yeah.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Yeah, I know.
No, I'm done.
All right. All right, we're gonna skip over districts three and four, and we're gonna move to District Five.
Okay, I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on the Memorial Day ceremony. I had a constituent reach out to me on a totally different topic, and then found out that he was actually there at the ceremony. And he said that when he moved here almost two decades ago, that he would come to this ceremony, and there were five people there, real, really small. And then he was commenting on how many people showed up this time, what a wonderful community we live in. And the Colonel who spoke also mentioned, he said, "I didn't know communities like this did this." It was so special, he was so touched. He had not been to Madison and downtown, and he attended with his wife, who they, they met at West Point. And so now, she's not in service, but he is, and it was just wonderful having them with us. And our council president gave an outstanding speech. And so, John, congratulations, that was such a good speech. I want a copy of your speech, it was so good. I, I want to also thank Michael McKay, Miracle League, the work, Janessa McDabb. I mean, everything that you do to make sure that our community is inclusive and, and your volunteer participation. You don't get paid to be the chair forever, and so I know, but we appreciate you for doing that. A number of us also attended the ALM Annual Meeting, got some training hours. And I think we're kind of lucky because Huntsville has won the bid for that event for like three years in a row. So that saves us in travel expenses. But to be able to attend, and Tracy Gillespie also attended with us and sat in on some of the sessions, and we were all comparing notes when we would do breakouts. But thank you all for those who were able to do that. And then last week was National Public Works Week. And wow, what a week to have that recognition. If people did not know, front and center, how important Publics Work, Public Works is to our community, they definitely got to see it last week, so thank you to all of them in the chamber, as you mentioned, on the pizza party. All right, that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, so move, just District Seven. Let's see, I'm gonna start off, just echo everybody, Memorial Day, it was really, really good ceremony. Same time, very, you know, set your, set your sight vector on, on the, the right path there. But I do want to thank Larry Vanoy with the American Legion. I mean, he's just really done a, an excellent job in putting that together. I also thank, you know, Public Works team, or whoever went down, made sure everything was, you know, cut and looked fantastic, was ready to go, so that, that was awesome. Also, the Madison City Orchestra, the fraternity, and it was not a, you know, it's not like a real fraternity, but it was, it was some singers. They were amazing. I mean, just, they did the National Anthem, and, and they did Lee Greenwood's, I'm having a, having a senior moment.
God bless the USA, is that?
God bless the USA, it was really, really good. So I really, really enjoyed that. And then Colonel Pat Farrell, who was with PEO Missiles in Space. PM Strike, that's what it was. His, his speech was just really outstanding. And so, just appreciate everybody for what they did. I appreciate our, our warfighters for allowing us to just be here. And whether we agree or not, that's the freedom they fight for, so it's just amazing. Moving on to that, I'll, I'll just say as well, Public Works, I mean, the, you know, bang-up job that they did last week, and they continue to do. I know, I checked on Kent today and checked on him last week. I mean, he's just always, even though, you know, they're up in the middle of the night or early in the morning, I say early in the morning, I mean, like, when the rest of us are sawing logs or looking at the back of our eyelids at like 3:00. Except for you, Gerald, I know, you're up at 3:00, but, yeah. But no, I mean, he's up, they're up, they're going, and, and just for them to continue to do what they do, I mean, that's, just thanks so much to them. Say again, right-of-way mowing, I know, has been a frustration of mine. I know the mayor's office, you guys are working it, and I know the rain doesn't help.
Yeah, we met with them, we met with them, I can't remember, it was Thursday or Friday, reset as best we could, but then, you know, there's only so much you can do, so.
Right, no, I got you, so I, I do, and I'll say, I mean, I share the same frustration. So I know they will get out there, they will get to it, it's really, really hard. They'll do more damage now than good trying to get there and cut, so. Only other thing, well, I got a few more things. Toyota Field, I just want to add, and Megan, you can throw something at me here if I missed, missed up, but that parking lot is not private. That parking lot is for use as part of the improvements we're making in Toyota Field, so that people that park are gonna enter in through that area in left field, have an area or ingress, egress, that they don't have to walk all the way around the outfield and walk in on right field through that entrance. So it's given us another entrance, given us more capability down there, as well as people that actually, maybe they want to shop there, and I don't know, or not shop. Maybe they want to park there, sorry, a little Freudian slip, but maybe they want to shop or park and then go shop, or go eat. So, you know, it's not just for, you know, season ticket holders or whomever, so. And then, next couple of topics I want to bring up, maybe related. One, I mean, obviously, the work session, I'll hit that in a minute, but there is a topic, MVP, Christina has talked to me about, and I don't see, oh, there's Mary Beth. I'm not gonna put you on the spot, so don't worry. There is a request from PJ's Coffee, I think PJ's Coffee, or, yeah, PJ's Coffee. They want to put a mural over there. I want to redo a whole bunch of stuff, but when we talked about originally doing murals in business districts, we, we kind of slow-rolled it. We put it into B3 first, and then we as a group said, hey, let's look at that, let's see how it goes, and then see whether or not we want to roll it out further. Reason I'm kind of bringing this up is PJ's is B2, so it's not allowed in B2 yet. So not saying we do anything right now, but just something to think about as we move forward. Do we want to roll that out into their, into B2 community, or was it? Community business, is that right?
I was thinking, and Mary Beth, correct us if we were wrong. I thought PJ's was listed originally, along with the two murals downtown, that PJ's was listed originally in our very first discussions. They were mentioned having kind of a New Orleans theme on their drive-through side. Am I hallucinating this, or, do you remember this, John?
You can if you want, I was trying to keep you from having to, I'm sorry.
How'd that work out?
Not well.
Not well.
Not well.
I, I could be imagining all that, but I could, okay, good, thank you.
There wasn't a conversation specific to PJ's, but when we had your work session, we discussed B1, which is the downtown, B2 and B3. And as Council President Seifer said, council wanted to slow-roll it, and so it's actually only allowed in B1, in the downtown, and also in the commercial areas, in the Village at Oakland Springs and near Taco Mama, that part of Town Madison. So it's not allowed in B2 or B3.
Okay, well, we're gonna plan to move forward on that?
I, I want to bring it up for discussion, I want y'all to think about it, and then we can figure out the path forward. I think from a regulation standpoint, I think we have to bring it up maybe at first reading, and then do a second reading and, and vote on it.
Probably just a new ordinance, right? Amend the ordinance, yeah.
I just want y'all to think about it.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking we had already done this. I, I don't know, maybe I'm foreshadowing in my mind or something, okay.
I don't know.
That's number five on the work session.
That, that's number five, all right. Number five. All right, and then, without further ado, the work session. We had talked about, just earlier today, I think, just through some conversation, we had talked about June 18th, but I think I heard you're out.
So I'm out, and then you got Juneteenth the next night.
Ah, yeah.
That would have to be, you know, the following week I'm in town, but you guys do it if you need to. I mean, Main Street can be here to present for themselves, and then SWAT Tech can present to you guys. Tracy, Tracy. then Swartek can present to you guys. Tracy, Tracy manages a lot of that, so she, you can do it then, I mean, I just, I'd prefer to be there, but.
Yeah, no, I, I'd prefer you to be there.
You gotta know how valuable your all's getting together is, so.
Yeah. Well, since we don't have the other three, why don't we just do this, let's take a task, or y'all look at your calendars. I'd prefer, if we do it, we do it sooner than 18th, 'cause I'd really like to get some things moving. I really don't wanna do it, I think, next week, maybe too soon, I think.
Maybe Monday the 16th?
Maybe, I have a Madison utility.
Oh, never mind.
Yeah, just do me a favor, y'all take, take a look at your calendars, and get me back some availabilities, and then we'll, we'll poll the other council members as well. And then, we'll get with Mary Beth and downtown, make sure we accommodate you guys. We don't wanna take y'all from down there where you're generating all that revenue for us, for us, so. Okay. I think that was all I had.
Can you go over, real, real quick, what are the subjects for the work session besides the mural, something about Highway 72?
The Highway 72 Fund.
Oh, okay.
Main Street Project, Swartek, Fund 38.
Okay, just keep this here, and that's all I'm, thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. With that, we will close presentation reports, we're gonna move into, well, we don't have any board.
We got a tornado warning, I think.
Wow, that's kinda suspicious.
I'd like to confirm it, but I can't see. Tornado warning for central Madison County and north-central Alabama until 7:45.
It looks like it is at Research Park Boulevard.
So, maybe past us?
And 565.
Wait, there's another.
Keep going, I'll go check real quick.
Okay, all right. All right. So, just so y'all know, the chiefs, I'm looking at y'all, when y'all tell me to go, I'm gonna go. All right? Okay. Uh, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so, we don't have any board and committee appointments tonight, we're gonna move into public hearings. And first up is, well, Mary Beth?
Yes, sir. First item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-104, and this is to rezone a property on Highway 72 that consists of 0.84 acres. You can see the area, I have it a little clicker, oh, there it is, thank you. You can see that property, right? Right there. And this is the MC District that it currently has, doesn't allow for drive-through uses. You can see the property just to the right, that's Zone B3, that's where Panera Bread is, and the council rezoned that property a couple of years back to allow for the drive-through use, so we're proposing the same change. We have a drive-through coffee shop that is proposed for this site. And Planning Commission and staff are supporting the request, there were no issues at the Planning Commission, and we're asking for your approval.
Move to approve?
Hold on a second, I gotta open.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry, forgot it was a public hearing.
We're getting ahead of ourselves, we are.
Easy that trigger finger. All right, so with that, we're gonna open a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this tonight? You are more than welcome to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Anyone else? All right, saying, saying no, we'll close that public hearing, and now we're gonna entertain a motion there, quick draw, McGraw.
I haven't heard that in a while, move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
I just wanna say thank you for your investment in Madison, very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am, next up, sorry.
The next three items all relate to kind of similar, or adjacent properties. The first item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-106, and this is to rezone 2.89 acres located at the southwest corner of Lanier Road and Celtic Drive, from M1, which is an industrial zoning, to B1, which is Neighborhood Business District, which is what is in downtown. And you can see that large rectangle there at the southwest corner. And Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval, there were no concerns expressed at the Planning Commission meeting for this, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, now we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to address council on this? All right, saying no, we'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
The next item is Resolution Number 2025-112-R. This is to vacate a portion of the Shorter Street right-of-way that the city has. It is located at the northwest corner of Shorter Street and Celtic Drive, you had your first reading on this in April. And you can see the property that is outlined in the lower portion. We would still have sufficient right-of-way on Shorter Street, Shorter Street has been improved when we did the Journey Middle School, or when that project went forward, and Shorter Street was extended. This is excess right-of-way that engineering has determined we do not need. What the plan for this portion of the property, it was ultimately, would be conveyed to the bulls, and the next item on your agenda is that rezoning, so that there'd be a larger property for commercial development.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to address this, or address council? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes.
And we have Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-110, and this is to rezone that piece of property that we were just discussing, it's .228 acres, and it is currently Zoned B3, as you can see, and so, the proposal is to change it to B1, similar to the larger rectangle to its north. And Planning Commission and staff are supporting this request.
All right, we'll open a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this tonight? All right, saying no, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
They can have a mural.
There you go.
There you go.
I like it. Awesome. Progress. Got a motion and a second, and we had some good discussion. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm moving, department reports, and first up, we have City Clerk.
Good evening. We've come to this part of the election process, and Carrie and I, and my compliments to Carrie, she's done an excellent job in getting our election workers, we'll call them election worker, poll workers, a lot of them are repeat, they work for the county, and they have worked for us with our municipal election. So, I have for you today Resolution Number 2025-124-R, appointing election officers for the 2020, August 26, 2025 general municipal election, and if there's a runoff, it would be September 23, 2025, should one be necessary.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And engineering?
Okay, tonight I have Resolution Number 2025-144-R, authorizing professional services agreement with S and ME Incorporated for environmental consulting services for FY2025 Outfall Inspections and illicit discharge screening, amount not to exceed $37,210 to be paid from Stormwater Fund.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can you just explain this in very simple terms?
Um, sure, so we have, I wanna say something like 700 outfalls, at the, kind of the boundary of the city into various watersheds. And every, based on our MS4, we have to expect those every five years. So, we break up into 20% increments, and so, this year, they're gonna do 147 of them, or something like that. And so, they're gonna go out, do the inspections, make sure they still look good, they'll check and see if there's anything that looks suspicious, and if it does, they'll do some screening, and if it needs to be screened further, they'll do that, too. That's all broken down in the pack in the proposal, for the various, kind of stages of what they're gonna be screening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you. Can I, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes. Thanks, sir. All right, next up, we have Facilities and Grounds. Hey, just make sure your plumber knows it goes downhill.
It does, that's right. Facilities and Grounds has two resolutions for your consideration tonight. First is Resolution 2025-138-R, Warden of the Bid Number 2025-009, ITB Genitoral Service for the Public Safety Annex to Basel Services LLC for a monthly cost of $3,150, plus optional services as needed, specified in the bid pricing sheet, this will be paid from our budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll just ask, I don't remember us ever approving this particular company before, just making sure they have a license for Madison.
They do.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, got a motion and a second, can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes.
So, next is Resolution 2025-172-R, authorizing professional service agreement with Mullins LLC for the design of additional parking at Toyota Field, not to exceed $57,500 to be paid from the multi-use venue fund. $43,500 is initial scope to design a new parking lot with $14,000 additional services, provide landscaping irrigation plan for the existing parking lot.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, I wanna start off, I guess I'll start a discussion on, on this. I asked Gerald to bring this forward, as part of us moving forward with the, what, a week ago Friday, we decided we're moving forward with option two. This is the parking lot that we've acquired at the land out, just outside of Left Field. To be able to do anything on that, we've gotta have civil engineering work done, to understand what's the topography of the land, and then how do we slope that, how do we put any kinda parking lot or structure on it, so that we flow water right, and, and just do things the right way. So, this, the first piece, that 435, will be to do that scope of work, and that will be for the full-out design. I think we could probably, I don't know, maybe add as number six to the work session, is just really quickly discuss, kinda what we wanna do there. But, you know, I don't, I think we, we've talked around, number about three and a half million for that, for the full, I think, build-out, as an estimate. I don't know that's what we wanna do to start off with, but I think we can have that discussion and figure out what, what the group wants to do, you know, as part of that. But, we can't do any of that if we don't get the site drawings done, civil engineering. And then, the $14,000 is for the, I think, last remaining work in the existing parking lot, all those little islands and everything around there, and looking at how we make that be what, what, what it was visioned to be initially, where it has some kinda landscaping or something in those islands, other than some rocks and pahaya grass, that, you know, is real nice, if you wanna take it, you know, shoot it like a rocket or something, so. But, that's what those dollars are for, is to develop that plan, and I think we'll get that back, and figure out what we wanna do there going forward, so. That's why this is here, so I'll say that. Is there any questions on that?
No, but you can't add anything else to the work session.
I think eight is a lot. Eight is enough.
This one, we may be able to tackle.
Oh, I thought I had.
We may be able to tackle that one before the work session, so. All right, did I hit everything right? All right, cool. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes, thank you, sir. All right, fire and rescue.
First item is Resolution Number 2025-171-R, it's authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Limestone County Water and Sewer Authority for fire hydrant testing and inspection. So, this is for the Limestone County portion, we did the Madison County portion last time, they just coincidentally come up at the same time. It's a five-year agreement that allows us to test the hydrants for our ISO, ISO rating.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Can we get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Denzine, Council President Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Next item is Resolution Number 2025-178-R, authorizing a contractor agreement with Sutherland Site and Sound for purchase and installation of AV systems in the training room at the Public Safety Annex located at 230 Business Park Boulevard, Building 23A, $61,582 to be paid from the Fire Department budget. This is the AV system for the joint fire and PD training room, it's the large room.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can we get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes.
Next item is Resolution Number 2025-179-R, authorizing the purchase and installation of 911 communications equipment and services for use by the Fire Department at the Public Safety Annex located at 230 Business Park Boulevard, Building 23A, under State Bid Contract 16932, in the amount of $60,212.25 to be paid from the Fire Department budget. And this is the fire station alerting system, so that's how we get our calls when we're inside the fire station, it comes directly from 911, so this is a, a piece of that, we have it at all the fire stations.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
Last item is Resolution Number 2025-180-R, authorizing a contractor agreement with the Laosy Group and Sutherland Site and Sound for the purchase and installation of smartboards and associated hardware and support services at the Public Safety Annex located at 230 Business Park Boulevard, Building 23A, in the amount of $23,424.95 to be paid from the Fire Department budget. And this is for the large and the smaller breakout training rooms on the fire side, AV system.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? Can I get the vote? Can I get the vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council Member Denzine.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll tell you, I think you're the big spender tonight now. I know. All right, and next up is HR.
Thank you, Mia, for pinch hitting for Kelly.
Tonight, we'd like to, on the Resolution Number 2025-163-R, authorizing a professional contractor service agreement with Stacy Thomas for first responder wellness support. And that is $38,000 for a one-year term to be paid from HR department budget. This is basically a, for last year, it was kind of like a pilot service. So this year, this is the second year we would be extending that. I do think that it is a, an essential benefit for our first responders. I think, I do believe that they will get significant benefits from it if we choose to pass that.
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second.
And I'll just say that in speaking with both police and fire, this has been a huge mental health benefit for our first responders. It's wonderful. Previous Detective Thomas, Mrs. Thomas, has been in the field, and she's worn the boots, and she knows what these men and women are going through. And mental health is so precarious these days. And she's here today, and I want to publicly thank her for the investment because when she retired, she could have gone anywhere. And she chose to stay here with her Madison family. And I personally am very grateful for her and so thankful that she is pouring back into our employees during a very difficult season of our life.
I agree. And then with this being, if it's passed tonight, I think we will get more participation.
Yes.
Beginning of the second year in the program.
I agree.
Anyone else? Ms. Thomas, thank you so much. I know it, it, it's probably, probably very interesting, maybe some of the stuff you hear and some of the things you got to deal with and helping our first responders and what they have to deal with, so, thank you. All right, that, can I get the vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Denzine.
All right, that motion passes. One question I did have with this, and I just, I'm curious. Having been the, the family member of a first responder that was killed in the line of duty, is there any part of this that is also available to the family members at all? Is there? Okay, that's awesome. I wish I'd have had that when I was nine, so, thank you. That's the reason why I'm a little messed up right now.
No.
All right, thank you. All right, and next up, we have legal.
Good evening. I'd like to request your consideration for Resolution Number 2025-173R. This is to continue the engagement of the city's lobbying firm, Swatech, Vaughn, and Bryan. If approved, they will continue to provide support in Montgomery for governmental affairs consulting and lobbying services. Since they've been retained, which was in 2020, they've secured funding for projects including the Madison Boulevard improvements, park upgrades, the community center, and the public safety training facility. The amount is $5,000 per month. This is currently paid from the legal department budget and managed through the mayor's office.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Well, and I wanted to ask, Mayor, you sent some very valuable information on how this has exponentially benefited our city by like a five or six to one ratio where we have made an investment, but then they've gone out and they have gotten so much more for us. Can you share with us some of the different programs that they have helped us with, please?
So I think a couple of things. One, we didn't engage them until 2020. And part of the reason we engaged them was at the time we were working to try to secure funding for the interchange. But we didn't have a voice speaking for us. We had a voice speaking for the developer, but we didn't have someone that, for ourselves. In doing that, in securing them, we then autonomously were able to go to the city, working with them. And eventually, it was determined that that $5 million needed to come to the city instead of, for an older term, Town Madison, which allowed us to then redo the Highway 20 Madison Boulevard, which you guys were, are, when they're in the very final stages of doing that. So that project was, was primarily done with state money that they helped us secure to make sure we had a voice instead of somebody speaking for us. Then, under that contract, they've continued. So people have asked, how do we, how do we manage this? We work with whoever typically is finance chair, city council president, to talk about where should, where's the best place for us to go ask for, for our own money that goes down to the state to come back here. So again, in 2022, they helped us secure $500,000 for park upgrades. 2023, $500,000 for the same thing. Those are both community center. Last year, $500,000 for the public safety facility, and this year, $100,000 for that. So each year, we're in essence, you're investing 60. Each year, they've helped us secure far more than that. The other thing they help us do is navigate going back towards the state. They help us in the Big Ten mayors because, again, we're, we are one of the 10 largest cities. We are an anomaly when it comes to the other cities. And sometimes we need our own voice, even within the Big Ten mayors, to say, hey, what about us? What should we do? Chief will tell you that, you know, the Glock switch piece that came out, Anaya's Law that came out, things that directly correlate to communities, they help us with our voice with those folks. And then help us navigate as the state has their session. It's what, 30 days? It seemed like 30 years. But each time, they're continuing to help us keep up with anything that might be detrimental while also working with us to create our agenda and help us. So that's what they do. I would welcome the chances, you guys, again. What I will do in supporting this is we will ask them to come to the work session. And from a contractual standpoint, while you'll approve it tonight, I won't sign it until we talk to you guys. And they can, in turn, let you hear from them what reality is instead of what you constantly hear from this dais, that there's some quid pro quo. Understand it. I also think when it comes to what we get for a $60,000 lobbyist compared to what some of these other folks are paying, which is, I'd say, six figures. You can go up into the $200,000 range. We're getting a huge positive investment for our money for that. But again, as we talked about, and finance chairs ask, if approved, we'll hold tight as far as signing going forward and ask for a monthly extension until you guys hear them.
Well, I've had requests to continue this to the June 23 meeting.
I'm sure that they'd be fine with that. I mean, they don't want, they don't want to work for an organization, a city that doesn't want them to work for them.
And that would give them time to come up.
So I'm okay with that.
Because most of us, I think most of us on the council have never met them. And we would like to meet them and hear from them what they, you know, what they propose to do for us for the next year.
I'm absolutely fine with that. So if you guys want to continue it, however you want to do that, I mean, glad to bring them back in, let you ask every question you want to.
Thank you. How do we do that correctly?
Someone would need to make a motion to continue to the desired meeting, and there would need to be a second and a vote on that motion.
Okay, I would like to motion to continue this until the June 23 meeting. And that should give us time to have a work session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, can I get the vote, please?
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
I did the motion, I already voted.
I got you. Okay, Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Bartlett. She's already voted, okay. You got it.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're good. All right, thank you. And next up is planning.
All right, so we have Resolution Number 2025-160-R. And this is a request to set a public hearing for an ordinance that would rezone property that is 1.17 acres located at the southwest corner of Sullivan and Perry. This is the property that the city used to own and sold. This is where, you know, the school district had offices, and it was the former fire station and, long time back, former city hall. So the request is to rezone this property from residential R2 to B1, which is the downtown zoning. We're asking that you set the public hearing for July 14.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council Member Denzine.
All right, motion passes.
The next item is Resolution Number 2025-156-R. This is also a request to set a public hearing for the rezoning of 4.62 acres on the north side of West Dublin. This is west of Sullivan Street. The property is currently zoned R4, which is multifamily residential. They're requesting a rezone to B3, which is our general commercial district. We are asking that this public hearing be set for July 14 as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council Member Denzine.
All right, motion passes.
Items C and D are related to the same property. The first is Resolution Number 2025-158-R. This is a request to set a public hearing to zone property that is hash marked there. It's 2.39 acres on the south side of Brentwood Lane. This property is currently in the county. And if annexed, it would be zoned to R1A. And you can see the surrounding yellow color is all of our R1A zoning. So they're requesting a zoning that is comparable to what is adjacent. We're asking that this public hearing be set for July 14.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one home would be built on this property.
This property is large enough that it could be two lots. And we discussed this when it went to the Planning Commission meeting. R1A requires 100-foot lot frontage, and the width of the lot would allow it to be subdivided. It's a fairly steep, well, the grade of the lot changes from front to rear, so you couldn't really develop the southern portion of the rear of the lots. But we would expect that they would subdivide and create two lots.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Can I get the vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Council Member Powell, Council Member Shaw, Council Member Bartlett.
Aye.
Council Member Denzine.
All right, motion passes.
And item D is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-162. This is a first reading of the ordinance that would allow for the property we were just discussing to be annexed into the city. And we would have the second reading on July 14 at the same time, the same day as the public hearing.
Is there anything currently on the property?
The property is vacant. There was, we did have members of the neighborhood attend the Planning Commission meeting, but nobody spoke in opposition to the annexation. They were just really more curious as to what might occur on the property. And again, it would be, if it's annexed and zoned R1A, it would be a detached, single-family home similar to what's around it.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote on it?
No.
No, it's frustrating.
You want me to go? I'm just waiting for you to give me the green light. That's all right. All right, thank you. And then the last item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-164. And this is a first reading for the vacation of utility and drain easement. And the subdivision that this is part of has got a fairly long, complicated name, but this property is on Shetland Road. If you're familiar with the Publix on Madison Boulevard, this property is directly behind the Publix on Madison Boulevard. And you can see the property outline there. The easement, the portion of the easement that would be vacated is at the north end. There is a commercial business park that has been proposed, and the first phase, first phase of which has been approved. So vacating the easement would allow that commercial development to go forward. And again, this is the first reading.
Just south of the railroad track there.
It's south, it's between the Publix and the church.
Okay, perfect.
All right, green light.
Yeah, thank you.
Red light. Sorry, I went back to my childhood. All right, next up is police.
Good evening. I'm here for Resolution 2025-174R. And it's authorizing a memorandum of, of understanding with the City of Madison Board of Education for a weapons detection canine that will be funded by the Madison Board of Education in the amount of $41,000 for acquisition, initial equipment, and training for one canine. For those of you that are wondering, this dog would be a quote-unquote floppy-eared dog. So we're talking Labrador Retriever type of dog that also operates as a comfort dog for the kids. But what it does is active detection of the scent of firearms through the air. So as a dog would walk through the hallways of the school, it would pick up the scent of a firearm and follow it back to the, the origin of that scent.
Move to, oh, I'm sorry.
So they initially offered us three dogs. We felt that was a little ambitious here at the beginning, so we're going to go with the one, test the feasibility of it. And if it looks like something we, we need, then we may go back and, and get additional canines. But right now, this is just for the one.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion?
This, this funding here is from the school for the canine. And then in the budget that you just passed is in the support that chief needs to outfit a vehicle for that support.
Yes.
Chief, I appreciate you working this. You know, we've had a couple of incidents, and I think this will go a long way towards, towards helping, so. My only requirement, she name him Flash. And those of y'all that grew up with Dukes of Hazzard, I'll let y'all figure that one out. Okay. We've got a motion and a second, and all discussion, I guess. Can we get a vote?
Council Member Roblesky.
Aye.
Council Member Spears.
Aye.
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine? I'm sorry. Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. And last up is Teddy's favorite person. Can I, do you want me to tell you you're my favorite? I'll make you feel better. It's all right.
I can live without that for one night.
Love you too, man.
Resolution 2025-165R, authorizing transportation agreement with the Madison Street Festival, Inc., for provision for buses for the street festival. We've been doing this ever since I've been here. They transport from the church and the stadium to downtown.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. Got a motion in two seconds. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right. Motion passes.
Second item is Resolution 2025-166R, authorizing a license agreement with Sage and Seekers, Inc., for an eight-week intergenerational collaboration program we held at the senior center. We, when we opened the new facility, we were trying to think of ways to do intergenerational programming. And we, lo and behold, out of the blue, were contacted by a teacher from James Clemens that brought us this program. Looks really cool and have a good impact on both the students and the seniors.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right. Motion passes. Cory, I got one thing for you. And just, everybody knows, you're going to look out for them at the Fourth of July fireworks. I found some hats for Cory and his team. Any of y'all that see him out, there's fireworks director, and it just says, when he runs, y'all run. And then assistant fireworks director, when it says, I duck, y'all duck. So we're trying, you know, we're just looking at safety. So...
I'd like to have a picture of that.
You might could have one. So they're on their way.
That's my temp fate.
What's that?
That's my temp fate.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Any miscellaneous business announcements?
We should all text you dates where available or not available the rest of June.
Anything before June 18th. Let's try and get it in before then. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. We adjourned. Thank y'all.
So while we're absolutely known for education in the city of Madison, the neat thing for us is we're now also known as the home of the Rocket City Trash Pandas. What started in 2018 as a vision of bringing minor league baseball together with a multi-use venue is now reality.
The best thing about Madison, in my humble opinion, is the Trash Pandas and Toyota Field.
I think is with the success that we've had with the team and then how it's continued to bring more business and more opportunities, also helps bring a little more notoriety.